Belmont Planning Board, welcome to the Tuesday, March nineteenth, meeting of the board. I called the meeting to order. Let me introduce the members of the planning board. Carl Haglund on my near right. Ed Stazek on my far right. Steve Pinkerton, the vice chair, on my left. Thayer Dunham, a member of the board, and Spencer Grover, who continues to be the acting senior planner for the town. Thank you, Spencer.
Thank you.
We have, this evening, we have two continued public hearings on proposed zoning amendments. The first one that we'll talk about is the single residence B zoning district. And the second one will be alterations to the inclusionary zoning bylaw. We will then have some neighborhood determinations and allocation of working group for a couple of properties. Then we'll do some business in terms of potential cases. And then we will move the meeting. Let me, though, as I begin this evening, let me go back to last Thursday and talk a little bit about the McLean discussion that we had at that point. We had decided last Thursday not to go forward to town meeting with the article that had been proposed by McLean. There were several reasons for that. One particular one was the amount of time we didn't think we would be able to get it in shape that it would be able to go to the warrant and to town meeting in that time. The reasons for that were, one, it was very clear that, as proposed by McLean, there was a lack of agreement of the participants who had come forward and talked about that, between the vision that McLean had proposed and discussions by the Housing Trust and other advocates for housing, as well as the neighbors in the woodland, which would be the most impacted zone. There was also a lack of clarity and determination in terms of what the parking and what the traffic requirements and impact would be on that. There was, in addition, there was a technical difficulty in the proposed amendments. In District Three, which was the continuing care proposed district, the proponent basically proposed to do a replication of the woodlands projects, which are duplexes and triplex townhouse-type projects, along with a multi-story building, much less dense, a much different project than had been proposed. It was agreed to in the memorandum of understanding for the town. The way it was proposed was to make changes, relatively small changes, in a number of parts, about the way the zoning was in place that would enable the developer to build the development that he had proposed. He may well have done that in the fullness of time. However, the amendments were entirely one-sided in terms of McLean and the developer in that. They did not reduce any development density or do anything to mitigate what would happen if the developer was not able to complete the project that he had proposed at that time. All the benefits were flowing to McLean and none were flowing to the town, except the long-term benefits from additional taxes on the property. My opinion was, and I think it was the members of the board as well, is that even if we agreed with the development that was proposed, there was no way to control it within the context of the zoning that was proposed. And in that sense, I believe it was a bad deal for the town. And I believe that we can do better in terms of that. Also, in terms of District Four, which is the district that is related to the proposed R and D project. The R and D project was proposed for approximately one hundred and fifty thousand square feet nearly twenty years ago. At one point, it was under agreement. Our understanding is that it hasn't been under agreement or has been marketed for at least the last four to five years and is not currently being marketed. The proposal that McLean had was not to restrict development in the area, but basically to open it up to any and all institutional uses. In parentheses, anything that McLean would like to do that is relevant to the mission of McLean. Again, it is hard to see what the benefit for the town would be, although certainly we agree that McLean is a worthwhile institution. And the proposed non-residential school that they are planning for the site will be a valuable contribution to the Commonwealth in general. McLean had spoken in terms of a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes, on the parcel. That never got any further than to say we would consider that. McLean, as we found out at this time, is not paying any taxes or any payments in lieu of taxes for either of those two parcels. So we think that that, like Parcel Three, opens up all benefits to McLean, but doesn't do very much for the town. It needs to be worked out. There is also the issue of the memorandum of understanding, which basically incorporates the zoning within it and goes further than that. It details the long process and the results of that, that McLean and the town went through approximately twenty years ago for the redevelopment of the site, which had a number of benefits both to McLean and the town. And we appreciate those. However, the proposals that are made in terms of the zoning for McLean, in my opinion, and I believe in the opinion of the board, require us to reopen the memorandum of understanding. I hope at this point that we will be able to begin again to talk with McLean and to the residential developer about potential development at the site, whether it's residential or it's a residential school for McLean. We think those are worthwhile projects. But I think, as I've said before, the devil is in the details. And there are many details to be worked out. And it did not seem that there was sufficient time to work those out. My suggestion is, at this point, that we have a discussion, not only with McLean, but also with the Board of Selectment, about perhaps establishing a task force and spending the appropriate amount of time to get this right. As I've said before, I believe that McLean can do better than this. And I believe that Belmont can do better than this. So, just to clarify. And I think we can move forward on this, hopefully for special town meeting in the fall, and that we can get something done that we can be proud of and will serve the needs of the town, as well as the hospital. So that's my comments on that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, at this point, let me, it's on my thing. So, we have a continued public hearing on Single Residence B zoning district. Spencer, you want to talk about that?
Sure. And just real quickly, before we move forward with the continued hearing, I just wanted to call to the board's attention the upcoming dates and deadlines. There is a tentative date on the calendar, just in case you need to continue the hearing again for Tuesday, March twenty-sixth. The draft amendments have to be submitted by March twentieth. And the deadline to submit is March twenty-ninth.
So, let me ask you a question at this point. So, if we decide to go forward with either of these two amendments at this point, and we think we pretty much have them in hand, although there is language that has to be changed, can we close the public hearing at this point, take a vote? Or what's the procedure in terms of that?
So, it would, A, depend on how substantive the changes are. If it's, you know, a comment here, a comment there, that's different than if it's a much larger conversation. You can close the public hearing before taking a vote on the amendment. So by closing the hearing, you've essentially closed the public dialogue. Then you can, you can hold on taking a vote on the-
And then we can change the text and stuff.
That's right.
Which we've done before.
That's right. And we could, we could do that on a subsequent meeting, like such as March twenty-sixth. So that would, you wouldn't open up for future, for additional conversation and additional changes, but you would buy yourself some time to make final amendments and then take a vote on it.
Does the town clerk have a comment? Yeah.
I do. I disagree slightly with timing because the articles are all going to Town Council. And usually it begins in two weeks to look at the full warrants.
Okay.
So, it doesn't mean that you wouldn't be able to amend it. But the version that gets printed and voted by the Board of Selectment typically is two weeks before.
Well, so, when does, excuse me, Ellen, when does that mean we have to have it to them?
So, the Board of Selectment is voting on April first.
On April first.
So, if you take two weeks off of that, that's when George's absolute last day needs to get it.
Which is?
By subtraction, I'm thinking the guy with calendar.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Lots and lots and lots of calendars.
We have to get a draft out tomorrow.
So we have to get a draft out tomorrow.
Right. There's no way you can draw a tweet. It means that he's starting his review once they send it to him.
So does closing, so we can close the public hearing, right? That's fine, or, yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Public hearing closing just means that you're not getting public input. The board always has the jurisdiction to make the changes.
That's fine. Always nice to have the town clerk here. Always nice to have you here, Ellen, too.
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sure.
So, yeah, we'll probably do that.
So, again, just to reorient everyone, the Single Residence B district is in the northern section of town. It's bounded on the north by Route Two, on the west by Clifton Street, and on the southeast by Pleasant Street. Staff has three broad questions that we want to pose to the board, and, which would help us move forward with finalizing the text and understanding how the board wants to move forward. So, before I move into the presentation, I wanted to call your attention, these three questions, and then we can move forward with the presentation. So, the first question is, I wasn't sure in the last meeting if it was determined that you wanted to do the GR model, which is special permit required by either the ZBA or the Planning Board, or this SRC model, which is either the project is by right or it's the special permit from the Planning Board if it crosses the thirty percent threshold.
Steve, do you want to?
From the onset, let me just be very clear. This is to be an extension of the work that we did on the SRC. That was the intention of the neighborhood. That's been my interpretation of the best way to proceed on this, so.
And that's currently how it's drafted.
And that's how it's been drafted. So I want to ratify that. And I assume that the board's, I mean, I'm speaking for the board on that, so.
Yeah, I also, I also think when I looked at this part of it, if we keep it the way it is, then we, we've captured the height thing. And that's the important thing on this one. So we've captured the height thing. Because I saw that there are places that you go through, if you don't say that explicitly here, there are loopholes.
Yeah.
And so this closes that.
Yeah, we can get into those.
So, then the next question is to confirm whether or not you want to move forward with the square footage threshold concept. And if you do, is the three thousand square foot the appropriate number? And then additionally, to confirm whether or not you want to delete the seven hundred square foot threshold from the text as well, which currently, as it's drafted, the seven hundred square foot threshold is taken out. And the three thousand square foot threshold is what's being proposed. And then the third question is, and we sort of touched on this, is how to approach the regulating the height, the increase in height. As it's drafted currently, any increase in height, whether it's feet or stories, would require a special permit from the Planning Board.
Bingo.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Bingo.
Let's be clear about what height means. We're not talking about height to the midpoint. We're talking about height to the highest point of the building. And I have some, I guess I don't. I have, I haven't not thought about all of the implications of that. But I think that that would at least cover the problem that came up with the garage. And so we're talking about non-conforming height. Is that correct, Spencer?
So that's, that's my question. The way it's drafted, in the current draft, it would be any increase, whether the height is conforming or not. Though, there's an alternative-
Whether the existing height is conforming or not.
That's correct. That's correct.
So, okay, so any increase in height in a building, whether you're talking thirty percent or anything else.
You have to have that. You have to have that because of, because you could have, you could have something like this and have somebody put a relatively small half, and then it's, it's a magnifying effect.
I think as long as it applies to this neighborhood, and we're not trying to extend that elsewhere. Because if you, we start getting into that, then somebody who's doing a relatively modest, single-story to two-story conversion, which is, you know, almost necessarily is going to involve thirty percent increase in the size of the structure, but may not. It may be that somebody's just popping up one side of it. I'm not sure that every time the height goes up, that needs to, as long as it's within the limits in the zoning ordinance. But for this, for this neighborhood, yeah, I think it's a special circumstance. I'm thinking about how this affects the innocent, you know.
Right. And so what this, what it currently, as it's drafted, would do is if you have a ranch home on a flat piece of property that wanted to do a dormer out the back, that would be, that would require a special permit because it's an increase in height or number of stories. Because they'd be going from one story to one and a half stories.
Right.
So that's what this captures.
Correct, okay.
And if that's, if that is the intent of the board, then that's what this does.
I think that, I think, given the-
Given the topography there.
And the peculiarities of-
I wouldn't want to overreach on that, honestly. I'm trying to, you know, we're in this balancing act between the concerns of the abutters and-
But the special permit, I mean, the special permit process-
That doesn't mean it's denied. It just means it has to go before us.
It just means, it means, like, in a case where it's a relatively benign thing, it's a quick look.
Right.
And it should be clear, let's say this now for future boards, it's a quick look. It's sort of, does it do something bad or doesn't? If he's just increasing it, it's not going to have an effect on, you know, the neighbors, which is our intention to avoid that, then it should be over easy.
And now I'm thinking of an example that will come up before us. And the increase in height is actually the opposite of what the concern is. It's into a hill. And so there's no abutter, there's no concern there. And it's something to look at. And it's, you know, because it's, because it's an increase in height. But it's one that is, can be mitigated by this, in this case, the topography. So, okay, I just wanted to bring that out as a potential concern. And, yeah, so I'm good with that language.
So the current draft is, in this instance?
It's gold?
It's gold?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to be clear about whether or not we were talking about, and just, I think to clarify, we were talking about total height, not height to the ridge, or height to the midpoint. That might be a clarification.
And we could add in here the height to the midpoint in feet, increase in height.
No, not, we don't want height to the midpoint.
We want it to the-
We want it to the ridge.
It's the total height of the structure. Because the midpoint is too, too loose. I mean, the midpoint, the midpoint of a chalet is a very different thing from the midpoint of a ranch. And so I think we, so we absolutely, not midpoint, we want total height, or height to the ridge. Generally speaking, Jeffrey has preferred height to ridge, just as a clarifying point. And he usually, and that catches the flat roof house as well.
Yeah.
Because there's, that's the ridge.
We've gotten in trouble with midpoints before.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And we do have, and we did, later on in the dimensional requirements we do for the entire SRB district, we just carried that language completely over, that it's a thirty-four midpoint, sorry, thirty, thirty to the midpoint and thirty-four absolute to the ridge. Which is something that we look at, though, in terms of whether or not, how that affects the abutters. Because, okay.
I think what, how this could be tweaked would be the height in feet to the ridge or in number of stories.
Yes.
And then that's-
That would do it.
That would do it, yep.
Yeah. And I think that's what we want to carry into this. You're good.
Yeah.
Can we go back to B?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, sorry.
To B.
His bullet.
To question two?
Yes.
Right. Ah, okay. Yes.
So then, so-
I'm, I guess what I'm struggling with is why isn't it the same as SRC? And I wasn't at the working group, so I, it's more needing a point of information rather than, I'm not being, I don't want it to sound critical, but I don't, it's starting to set up a whole nother standard saying that three thousand square foot houses are big. I mean, they're huge, but.
That's what we were saying last week, is that setting a number is not an interesting thing at all. That, that's a threshold. It was interesting, in a way, to look at the problem of the size of the increase. I don't think we were as interested in talking about the size, the resulting size of the house, if you get my drift. I mean, we were, we were, we were saying, we don't want to talk about the size of the house.
The resulting size.
It's the proportional increase.
Proportional size of the increase, so that we capture increases to large houses. And I thought that was a very clever way of doing it. But the three thousand, the total square footage amount has crept back into the language. You didn't have that the last time around, and we were-
So the previous, in last week's hearing, the previous draft had the thirty percent or seven hundred square feet.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And then-
And that's what we were interested in.
That's what you wanted. Okay, I guess, I misunderstood. I thought it was the other way around.
Well, now the question is, how many hundreds of feet are we talking about?
Yeah, yeah. And I think, if I may move forward to this chart, it actually, you're sort of, the result is the same, whether you do the seven hundred square feet or the three thousand.
Exactly.
You're, you're cutting into pie in the same place.
And it's, and it's an easier argument to make, that the problem here is the size of the increase. And we're trying to capture houses that are already large, coming in at twenty-nine percent, and adding a thousand square feet.
Right.
Right? If we, that's a very different kind of concept than coming in and saying, you can't build a house. If you want to build something bigger than three thousand square feet, you've got to come to the Planning Board for approval.
Understood.
That's, that's, that's a controversial approach. But I think it's the proportionate addition.
So then, we would revert back to the more than thirty percent or seven hundred square feet, whichever is last.
Right. You could have a twenty-eight hundred square foot house and want to add one small bite to it at two hundred feet, or three hundred feet, or something like that. And that's, I mean, that's, it's just, that's not fair. That's, you know, to say now you've got to come before the Planning Board because you're putting an L, you're furnishing over the garage.
It also, it also solves the problem of over-regulating-
Exactly.
-properties on larger lots that are larger houses.
Right. Right. Because we're going to run into, you know, this will be on non-conforming lots, but a conforming lot is twelve thousand square feet.
Right.
And that, that argues, I mean, that's a three thousand square foot house on a twelve thousand square foot lot, or an eleven thousand square foot lot is not that big a deal.
Yeah. That's coverage, that's coverage of only thirty percent or less, yeah.
So-
So, so the size of the addition-
Is the, is what we're regulating and not the result.
Right. It was thirty percent. And the reason we're putting a number in there is because twenty-nine percent could result in a very big addition-
Right.
On a larger house.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. And I think you sort of, you achieve the same-
You do.
-result. It's just-
You do.
It's in the-
But it's, it's a much easier thing to explain and to justify and to show. We can show the graphic of, here's a large house. And if you put, you know, twenty-nine percent on, and it's bigger than anything else in the neighborhood, that's, that's, that should come to the, to the Planning Board.
Okay.
So, let's, let's retain that. And the seven hundred square foot is an indication of the median? Is that, that's the derivation of that, was the median size?
That's right. That's essentially, the median-sized, non-conforming house could increase by roughly seven hundred square feet or in thirty percent.
Thirty percent, which is about the same number.
That's right.
Exactly. And so we're now trying to capture the larger house.
And so is that how we got to the three hundred? Sorry, I'm still struggling with why we aren't making-
Three hundred is GR.
Three hundred is the GR, and they were carrying that over.
And SRC, right?
And, no.
No.
SRC doesn't have that.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just in the GR.
Okay.
And the idea was that in the GR, people were putting small decks on the back of the house and they were coming to us. It was a jurisdictional question, not an existential question. And so, in this case, that's not where we're going with this. So three hundred feet was just a carryover.
Fear and load. I mean, come on, let's go.
Right. And three hundred feet was generally what, based on the case, the caseload that had come for the board, the board quickly approved that it was the GR.
That was the GR, and that was a caseload issue, but not, not a size of the house issue. So, let's not conflate those two. The seven hundred is a sensible number, given, it's a much bigger number, too. So, because otherwise, if we're getting anything, if we're getting three hundred square foot additions, no matter what, that's, that's not at all what we had in mind here. That's much too big a caseload for that, so. So you're with us?
I am. So I will put the seven hundred square feet, or whichever is last back in, and then remove the language that refers to the three thousand square foot.
Okay.
Is that satisfy what you're concerned with?
Yeah, it's better than the three thousand.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then additionally, last week, Carl expressed concern about the use of the word challenges. And so we've switched it out for conditions to address that concern. And lastly, the, there was some question about whether or not there were any two families in the district. As previously drafted, it said, "single" or "two-family dwell," structures. And when I looked, there is, there happens to be, there's one two-family, and then there's a condominium development. And so what I did was just switch that out with the word dwelling, because dwelling is defined elsewhere in the bylaw already. And it sort of captures any potential anomaly that might be in the district.
We don't have any, any non-residential improvements in the district that have just fallen there by historical accident?
I, that I don't, I think there might have been some that were, the assessor has them in as commercial. I didn't go in and verify, I think they follow along the Pleasant Street, where, because there is that small-
It's only Pleasant.
Right.
And up at the top, is Park Street in this?
Park Street's not. I think Clifton is the-
Clifton's, okay, so. That one ends up in SRC, that little park.
What commercial properties are we catching?
Leader Bank. Office and it had- It's Park, no.
Park Avenue. Okay, that's Park Avenue.
Unpleasant, Spencer?
Unpleasant.
The Leader Bank and- Gas station.
There are some there that are, there is own commercial.
Leader Bank is commercially owned.
That's commercially owned. LB.
Right. I suspect that there are a few that probably fall outside of that zone line and end up being in the SRB. But they're probably along that Pleasant Street.
May not even be developed as such. It's hard to say.
There would be the ones, what's the road that's after the lockers there? The extension of Brighton Street? Yeah, oh, that's still Brighton Street when it crosses there. Who's on the other side of that? There's, is that the little commercial thing there?
The rug.
The rug place.
There is, I said, an LB three.
It's an LB three, yeah.
Two, maybe.
The mixed, you know, residential commercials, the only one is up on Park Avenue where you can sex with the two.
Yeah.
Okay.
They have housing above, and then they have-
The old Sages.
The old Sages, yeah.
So that's the only one?
But that's not in the district.
That's not in the district.
No, not in this district.
Okay. So we're fine.
Yeah, yeah.
We're fine. I just wanted to make sure that, that we didn't have any, okay.
That's recovered.
Yep. That was the-
So do you, and you also, all of the dimensional, do you have a shot of what's going on in the dimensional things?
I don't have it up here.
It's in our thing.
I can pull it up.
Just for the, for the audience of-
Sure. I can pull it up on the website.
Show what the changes are on that. Because it really is just a matter of adding B and C and changing the letters so that- Because it really is just a matter of adding B and C and changing the letters so that they make some sense.
But in the intensity, though, you have changed the, the building height.
Yes.
Yes.
In all, oh yeah, all, all these dimensional requirements.
Yeah.
In section four.
Yep, they're all, they go from...
They're all there.
They go from thirty-six to thirty.
We're just straight over, carrying them over from, there we go, so.
Yeah.
So you get the change in the maximum.
It's exactly the same, it's...
Height to midpoint is coming, maybe the same as C. Setbacks will change, be the same. The utilities in the front yard, and...
And for those people that are concerned about that, I believe that our, just standing will be, if you have something in the front yard, it's grandfathered.
It's grandfathered, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
I have the word docs here, if you want to make the amendments
Yes.
that we've just talked about tonight, and then...
You want to do that? You want to do it? We might as well.
We got time, sure.
Sure. It, it, we'll be done by eight on this.
That's great.
Yep, let's, let's go.
So this is the section we talked about adding in height in feet.
So Spencer, under, under point two, the, to the existing non-conforming structures.
Yeah. The flag's going again, it's me.
Yeah, you gotta pull forward a little bit, yes.
It's me. Don't tread on me, yeah?
So Spencer, the, the only change in the, in the sentence, the beginning sentence is, is the word existing, is that correct? I mean, it's all redlined there, but...
Trying to remember if I altered the, to make it make sense with the way that the bullets were structured.
Oh, you may have, yes.
Let's see, pull that up.
Sure, sure. Yes, please, please.
Yeah, before we make the changes, let's, let's make sure that we're...
Yeah, no, I just have a question, Ellen O'Brien-Cushman in Scott Road. So my question is about the outline, as you were just talking about, Spencer. So if a person buys a house or has a house and tears it down, then they are covered in your B one section, because there's a whole description about that. But in terms of the superiority of the outline, in B two, there is, the only language says, the building commissioner determines that such proposed alteration or structural change to the existing non-conforming structure. Once they tear it down, there is no existing non-conforming structure. So the question is, how do we kind of capture that for a teardown, or is that, are we opening a different interpretation? Is what, I know what you were trying to do by adding that word, because of the whole thing that came up with the ZBA, but I, I just am looking at the numbering, the number one and two are equivalent, and two is not subservient to one. Am I just reading it wrong?
It's, it, these are all, they're, they are, they are one after the other, but they're not linked and sequential in that sense.
Right, so alternatively, you could leave everything in place, and use the first paragraph instead of having a number one next to it. You could leave the first paragraph as a standalone, and then put a one next to, the building commissioner may issue a building permit under any of the circumstances. Just as a...
I see what you're saying, rather than, in the beginning, the opening to...
Should we take this out?
I'm suggesting perhaps you want to consider taking the one and moving it down to
One under the building commissioner.
the sentence that says the building commissioner, instead, so that mean it's very clear that it's either existing or it applies to a teardown to the prior structure. I'm not a lawyer, I don't know, but it does, the numbering doesn't make sense to me.
I, I see what you're saying. The, the definition is basically, in essence, repeated, or should be repeated in paragraph two, but it covers everything in the first paragraph. So the opening paragraph covers the condition, and then the, the, the first, the bullet...
Actually, it should be A, B, C, it should be A, B, C if we're doing it right.
Right. Well, actually, we have A in general zoning districts, this is in B, so it's, so this is, it's correct that it's one.
But the ones under should be small a, like the...
Oh, I see, down below, yes.
Concerned, the SRC is structured where it's, it's this way, where it's one, and then sub-one, sub-two, sub-three, so...
Let's move this one here, and then label these little A, B, C.
Right, they should be labeled A, B, C anyway.
Because it's that way all, every place, all.
Yeah. It, this is, this is, the only, and it's, it's, it's not a substantive change from the SRC, it's actually better language, I mean, it's a better structure, it's something that the warrant folks would be happy with, I think. I, I see what you're saying, Ellen. Spencer, do you see what she's saying? So basically, the, where bullet number one is, that, that would be at the end, no, that whole paragraph stays there by itself with no number.
Right, right.
Then the number one comes under the building, commissioner may issue a building permit under the entity of following circumstances. And then number two is, if the building commissioner determines the proposed alteration or change does not meet any of the clauses above, then special permission should be reported from the Board of Appeals.
Does that mean a new house?
Well, the, the reconstructed, extended, altered, or structurally changed covers everything.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? What's, the problem is that it's not repeated under number two here.
Right.
And so, what Ellen, what I hear being proposed is that we leave the blanket paragraph at the top.
It's the superseding paragraph.
Superseding paragraph, and then under number one, the building commissioner may issue a building permit under the following circumstances. Otherwise, basically, if, if the building, see, here's the superseding paragraph to another one, this is, this is, this is really kind of all over the place. So number one, if the building commissioner, the building commissioner may issue a building permit under the following circumstances. So this becomes number one.
Right.
Right? And A, B, C.
Then this one...
And then this, this becomes two, right here, if, if they can't do it, because that's what this, this sets up. So the building commissioner may issue, otherwise, basically, if the building commissioner determines that, that, that the, well, do we need to, if, now we have to figure out how that's going to work.
Right, and I'm, I'm afraid, my concern in making changes here and now is that we can't digest the ripple effect
Right, going down forward, yeah, exactly.
Let's just do the substantive changes, then.
Let's, let's look at that, and then let's worry about the, the, we can, we can work on the... Yeah, we do understand, we hear your, your concern, so let's keep it the same.
Well, let's just do the substantive changes, we're in agreement on those.
Thank you, Chuck.
Let's put those in place, then you have text, okay? And then you can, that, that can go, okay?
You'll have, you'll have time to, to figure out more, you understand the issue.
Right.
We'll have the bylaw committee, or whoever it is, will, will inform us on the proper way to do this.
So, okay, so, so now backing up, what we're really interested in is the, the
Yeah.
the height and number of stories.
Yep.
Let's get the important stuff.
So then, the height would be the height in feet to the ridge, or in number of stories. And then this comes out.
And, and that paragraph B could be the gross floor area by more than thirty percent or seven hundred feet, whichever is less.
It actually should be the lesser of.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
The lesser of.
Thirty percent.
That would come up and tell me.
Yep.
The lesser of thirty percent or seven hundred feet.
And that's with an ER, not an OR, because then we really get confused.
You can take the comma out.
Take the comma out, right.
And this comes out completely.
Go up and take the comma out before seven hundred.
Or, take it, yeah, no.
Oh, oh, perfect, yeah.
Right there, right there, yeah, there you go. It'd be nice, do a search and replace when you're all done on all this, and spell out square feet.
Okay.
I always make everybody do that for me. After the, the sentence that begins either as a standalone could be simplified by saying, if the application itself, then in parentheses, or when, combined with the gross floor area added to the structure during the five-year period preceding the date of the application, you put all of that in a parenthetical. So it reads, either the application itself, or when combined with the gross floor area. And I don't, I don't think you gain anything by saying standalone or either as, you just say if the application.
It's not a standalone sentence right now, it's
Yeah, it's actually, it's a
It's a continuance of
Continuation.
But it doesn't, it's, yeah, you lose the thread.
You don't have the conditional, you don't have the if anywhere, so...
So we're proposing to change this to, if the application itself, open parentheses, or when combined with the gross floor area added to the structure during the five-year period preceding the date of the pending application, close parentheses, then the proposed alteration or structural change shall require a special permit from the planning board.
So you'd, the parenth, the parenthetical starts with or and ends with application. The problem with that, one, one issue is that the, the actual if starts right after the number two.
Yep.
So there's a very long conditional.
Too long for good interpretation.
Too long for, for any comprehension.
How about a...
In fact, just above that, you've got another if, so you've got two ifs going on. Oh, you're right, attacking the, the condition.
Well, can you put, can you put in and of itself, or when combined with the gross floor area, blah, blah, five years preceding the date, could that all go after proposed alteration?
Yep.
Yep.
So...
In, starting with in and of itself.
In and of itself, so we're talking something like
All the way to...
To here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you haven't, you haven't ended, you haven't put any kind of connection between the B clause with the, with the full sentence afterwards.
Then, then, then the proposed alteration or structural change shall require a special permit from the planning board.
Yep, this would all come out here.
That comes out, there it is, so your if starts at number two. The, I, I, I'm actually, I'm not sure I understand what the first if is all about. If, if the building commissioner determines that the proposed alteration or structural change does not meet any of the changed clauses listed above, a special permit shall be required from the Board of Appeals. And then, we start with another if, that talks about coming from the planning board. And it's, it's, there's some confusion about jurisdiction there, what is the Board of, the Board of Appeals is, in this case, the planning board.
Right, you have to spell it, you have to spell it out.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, well, we have the substantive changes, and I think we need to work on...
Tweak on...
Yeah, we'll tweak those other things.
So I mean, we'll continue this till?
Huh?
I think, I think we can, we can run this as a draft.
We can run this as a draft, they can take a, you know, we get to them, yeah, yeah.
As long as we have the substantive stuff in here, and
Yeah, and I mean, I'll talk with them, and we'll have, it has to go to the town council first, yeah.
Do we need to vote on it?
Yeah, yeah, at, at some point.
I mean, do we need to vote on it before the draft goes out?
I, I think we need to vote, the draft has to go out tomorrow, and I think we
We can approve.
The draft can go out as a placeholder, and then you can still, you can fine-tune it.
We don't need to vote on...
We can approve the draft, or, or not, do we need to?
We don't need to.
So, March twenty-ninth is when it has to be into, to Selectman's Office, so
Sounds good.
That's sort of the drop dead deadline. In its final form, right, and so a vote would need to occur before then.
Right.
That's probably better for us to do, are we meeting next Tuesday, which would be the twenty-seventh?
No, I don't think so.
No, not currently, we have a placeholder for that on the calendar here, but it's not scheduled, yeah.
We have to, well, we will have to meet to approve the, the, the final draft before the twenty-ninth.
That's right.
Right, yeah, so I guess we're gonna have to meet.
We're gonna have to meet, we're gonna have to meet, yeah. We're actually, for, for, we have the great advantage of the experience of the SRC, because ordinarily, to make this kind of a change, you know, for, the zoning would take much longer than this.
Yeah.
So, we're doing, we're doing well here.
We are, and, and, and thinking about that, I get a little nervous about it, but it's
We're doing well.
We're really cleaning the language up, I think, now, at this point, making it a little more readable.
I think the important thing to understand at, at this point, is that we have a consensus on what we want to do, and how we want to do it, and what the particular aspects are. Now we're, we're, we're tidying, we're tidying.
And the new concepts can be sent to town council for review
That's right.
while you're cleaning up the, the structure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. One last little bit, if, if you want, if, if we have too many ifs, if, if, if parentheses two starts with the, so it says, the building commissioner shall determine if the proposed alteration. And so, so you're, you're starting a new... There you go, very clever, very clever, yeah, we like that, we like that, good. Good, Carl.
Does that work?
And then you can put a period after three thousand square feet or greater, and, and start a new...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, determined if, that's where the if goes.
Okay.
And not of that.
And it's not a weather?
If the proposed
Uh-uh.
Obstruction.
Well, and then you've got, and, and then if so, oh, I see, yeah, you need the if, you need the if there.
Then you, you, and you don't, you don't need that. You don't need, then you can just delete in and of itself, and just say, or when combined.
Yep.
Which maybe would, including, instead of or when combined, no?
You, you don't have a real sentence here, you're saying, the, the building commissioner shall determine if this is, meets this standard then.
I toyed with this approach as well, and kept going back and forth with...
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you're starting out with a very long if clause, if you do it that way, and you have an if then.
Could be, you need a period after B, if you're gonna go this way, you need a period after B, and then a new sentence at the end that says if either of these conditions are met,
Yeah.
the proposed alteration shall require a special permit.
Right, exactly. Yeah, so you, you need to, you need to set it up, you need to, you What it's saying is, or what's being proposed is, is that the building commissioner needs to determine whether these two conditions are true.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Period.
Right, because he shall determine this or that, period.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If
If, if, if
Such determination.
Then that.
Determination, yes, then that.
If these happen, special permit.
We still have an extraneous if going on up and above that, but...
Wait, look at, he may issue a building permit if a half-story addition to a non-conforming structure will not increase the footprint.
Now, we've got a problem in, in bullet three.
When, if we
We're conflicting.
If
But if you, if you put a period after B, then you simply can say it, the full sentence, the proposed alteration shall then be requ, shall then require a special permit.
Yeah, exactly. We, we have a more interesting concern.
Well, if I could pause here for just a moment.
Yeah, let's, let's clear this one up.
I'm concerned that by making these additional changes from what, how the SRC was structured, we may lose the simplicity of the, of the amendment that's being made.
I, I, I agree, I think for the time being, I think what we decided was we were going to go with the substantive
Yep.
issues, not try to wordsmith it tonight, worry about the wordsmithing as we move forward. But Thayer just brought up another interesting point. Okay, so, so now that you're completely confused, we know what the substantive things are, this, this language has got to be tweaked.
Mm-hmm.
Move back up to what is now bullet number C.
Mm-hmm.
A half-story addition to the non-conforming structure that will not increase the footprint of the existing structure. A half story addition to the non-conforming structure that will not increase the footprint of the existing structure.
Hmm.
That's gotta come out. So Spencer, could, could you roll the tape back up?
Oh, yes, I'll just.
So that's, that's directly from the SRC?
This is.
Yeah. So basically, this is saying that if you wanna build a dormer on the back of your, your, uh, your ranch.
Right.
Um, or on, on your cape even, if you wanna to, to put a half story addition to the thing.
You wanna take this, you, you wanna take this out because of the top, topographical?
Because of the topographical, because we've, 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 we've put a whole thing about the topographical, I, I, that's a great catch, I, I didn't.
All right. Delete that whole thing.
So there is, there's a caveat in that clause, it says provided that the existing height restriction shall not be exceeded.
Yes, but, but that, but our, our whole issue here is that, um.
Regardless of the height restriction.
Yeah, regardless of the height restriction, it's, it's, it's the perception, not only the perception, but it's the actual height that if you have something further up the hill.
Yeah.
So, even if the actual height is under it, when you increase that, you increase the, it, uh, it's effect, it has a magnifying effect, the slope has a magnifying effect.
I think.
That's what we.
And, and that's, and we, and that's what we said here, is that.
Yep.
Any, anything with the additional stories, and this is a half story that we're adding, so.
Right, you're, you're negating seen and.
Right, so we gotta take that whole clause out.
Yeah. We better have good pictures that go along with this presentation.
Oh, you have some fantastic ones.
You do.
Yeah. Each other better.
Yeah, this was, this clause was put in specifically to make sure that people who wanted to, you know, add a half story to their existing, you know, cape, essentially.
Right, sort of the inverse of.
The inverse of what was going on.
Yeah, right.
In this case, that can be pretty detrimental if it's in the wrong, and it doesn't mean they can't do it, it just means that they gotta come talk to us.
Okay.
I think that's the thing that, so we're gonna have to take that out.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so where are we now, on page one dash two?
Good question.
I think we're, I, I think we're gonna have to.
We butchered this, this, this page.
Yeah, we, we totally butchered.
Yeah, we'll let Spencer clean it up tomorrow.
Make it so.
Make it so.
Make it so, let's move to one two.
I think we're away on the, the rest of it.
Uh. The only thing I would say, um, being sensitive to the height issue, uh, one, two, uh, parentheses three, mi- uh, non-conforming structure dwelling may be reconstructed.
Wait, hang on, Spencer, we're on this page and if we could go up a little bit?
Where are we? Mm-hmm.
This is the only one that I sort of have.
So where, where are you checking?
Right here.
Here.
At three, okay, so it's not showing on this, so maybe it's up above, there we go. So now.
Okay, here I see, so here it says, an, a non-conforming dwelling may be reconstructed after voluntary demolition, is the building is reconstructed, as reconstructed, will be located on the same footprint as the original non-conforming structure, will be no greater in volume or gross floor area as the original. I could have it on two floors and then I decide to build a tower.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it would be the same.
Same volume.
Volume, it'd be on the same floor area, but, but I have a tower here, so, um, I think, I think we, no greater, uh, no greater in volume, height, or gross, gross floor area as the original non-conforming structure.
There we go, yeah, we need to put height in there.
Should we specify height to the ridge?
To the ridge.
Saying someone could convert from a, a ranch to a.
Yeah, to a chalet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's notorious.
Which, which is.
Yeah, it's very common.
I know, two examples, just boom, right there.
You know, to play on what they say in Jurassic Park, a developer will find a way.
Yeah.
And the rest of it, I, I think we're, I don't think there's any changes or anything, are there, for anybody?
I think I have eight in A as well.
Uh, yes, 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 we should repeat it exactly. Yes.
It takes a board and a village.
Yeah, yeah, we don't want anybody building keeps up there, right, yeah, on top of a ranch house, okay.
At the same time, we don't wanna prevent people from being able to improve their property, it's bad for them.
No, it's also, I mean, it's an investment in the community as well.
Exactly, so.
Yeah, um. Okay, did, do we have, does anybody else have any change, all of these I think we've talked about, and, um, I think it was, when we start messing with the language, adding things and taking out, that's where it's become problems, uh, for us. Does anybody have any comments on the remaining part that's redlined through here, did we miss anything?
Uh, four C, instead of, uh, topographic conditions.
What page are you on, one three?
I'm on page one dash two.
One dash two.
Uh, four C, instead of saying addresses topographic conditions in a way that avoids, strike in that, in a way that avoids and just say to avoid.
Yeah, it's a lot simpler.
Yep, yep. Okay. There, Ed, any, anything, are you guys seeing anything?
No.
Okay, this is not.
We're gonna have to scrutinize the next version.
Yeah, so it isn't a tragedy if there are things that.
Yeah.
This point that need to be changed, um, we've got the substantive things, great job Spencer.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, so, um, you can put this, so, go ahead and make these changes and then, when do you have to have, can you, you send these tomorrow to town council, right, is that it?
I can put these changes together tomorrow and then, and forward it along for council's review.
As Steve said, make it so, is everybody in agreement with that, do we have any?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
And we'll get to look at it again next week.
Absolutely, that's right, on Tuesday.
Yeah.
So, at this point.
I guess send us copies when you send it out to the, to town council.
Will do.
Uh, this, this is a rhetorical question, but at this point, are, are there any other, uh, public comments, are there any public comments? Okay, that's a good one, okay.
We missed, we lost Dr. Berger.
I also want one thing, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there, that's okay.
For sharing a copy here, so I'm like lagging behind.
Yes, no, you're right, no, it's okay.
So, this, at the very big, first page.
What page, what page? Yeah.
So we have if the building commissioner determines that the proposed alteration blah blah does not meet any of the clauses, a special permit shall be required from the Board of Appeals.
Exactly.
Yes.
So then, if they determine that the alteration increases, so, why do we have both?
I, I know, that's, that's what I was asking, it's, there's a redundant sort of cla- clause in there and I'm not sure why it's in there.
I think we, okay, sorry, I missed that.
Yeah, I agree, no, I, I, that's, yeah, that's what I was asking earlier.
It's contradictory.
Exactly, because we're, and, and we, and in this case, the, the Board of Appeals is the planning board, um, but there, there, there's, there, there's a double if-ness happening.
Right.
Here, condition, and it seems like there, it's, it's pretty much redundant, so that's, again.
It's this section here that it, there's some redundancy, it's items, bullet two and the preceding paragraph.
Right.
Well, it's not just redundant, it contradicts each other, right?
Well, this one says.
Oh, from the Board of Appeals.
From the Board of Appeals, and, and in this case, the Board of Appeals is the, the, the planning board, but. You could combine those two paragraphs and make it just one big paragraph that's.
Right, can we make some?
Right, if the building commissioner determines the proposed alteration or structural change does not meet any of the clauses listed above, um, to the existing non-conforming structure by increasing, you know, A, B, and whatever, then it goes to the planning board.
Right, 'cause it's cut, the way it's set up is, if, if you comply, here's what you can do, but if you don't, here's what happens, so it's one or the other or not.
Right, right, it, it, it is a, pretty much a redundant. This is just saying, th- this says that, yes, exactly, it says if, 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 if it meets these conditions, then you can, you can build a building.
Go to town.
And then it says if you don't, then you can't, and then if you don't, you can't, um, so rather than, I don't, I don't even know why that one's in there, but again.
Right.
I think it's just leftover text.
Is this, is, is, is this the change from the SRC that Jeffrey put in?
I think what this, so this, the, the paragraph that precedes the existing item, bullet number two, I think it's saying that if the above alteration is non-conforming, it is not, itself is non-conforming, but does not rise to thirty percent, then it goes to the ZBA, they would be the Board of Appeals in this instance. And then it's when you get to the.
Because we haven't got the thirty, thi- this, this one sets up, uh, this says that you can, if, 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 it, it does go to the ZBA.
Right.
It's not conflicting, if you, if you, uh, are, um, if you're in violation of the current setbacks, you gotta go to the ZBA, right, this one says if it isn't, then, it, it, so, so this is complete in itself.
Okay.
And says these are the conditions under which you can, you can get a permit by right, if you can't meet these, then it's gonna have to go to the ZBA, the Board of Appeals. In addition, if the, if the building commissioner determines the following things, then it goes to the planning board.
Right, okay. Right.
So that's where the distinction, so that's what that's all about.
So, should it say in addition?
Or, yeah, right there under, under number two. So, so the, the whole section one is actually the holdover from the original language of the.
Right.
The amendment, of, of this article, before we amended it by adding part two.
Right, right.
Okay, and there's, there's, it's, it's fine in itself, except for the single and two-family dwelling part of it.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the numerology's off, I mean, it should be A, B, C, not one, two, three, but otherwise, that is i- in itself a complete hole, I think we do have to have that second if.
Yep.
So the, uh, bullet two stays where it is with the second, if the building commissioner determines.
Yes.
And we would.
So this says basically if you're just doing a little, if you don't meet these conditions and you're just doing a small one, then you go to the ZBA, whereas this, if you don't meet the conditions and you wanna do something bigger, you come to the planning board.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, and all we did was move the one down to make this whole introductory clause cover the definition of a non-conforming building, so. So there's a, there's.
I didn't mean to be confusing.
No, no, that's fine, it, yeah, exactly, it's just, well, we've been assuming that somehow that was redundant, and in fact, it's a necessar- necessary part of the, 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 the part above. Um, I remember, it's, it's been a while since I went through this with Jeffrey when we.
And it's, it's a bit of a filtering is what's going on.
Exactly, right.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
That's great, so, uh, we're gonna.
Make sure Jeffrey's healthy and has a look at this.
Yeah, yeah, tell him not to add anything.
Subtract.
In terms of this, so, um, what's your suggestion then, that, that, do we keep the public, uh, hearing open or should we close it at this point, I don't know if we're gonna get any more substantive, I mean, we've made all our substantive changes.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody can submit a comment, um, and, and we can entertain that when it comes in, so, let's, why don't we close it, so move to close the public hearing on this matter, or should I do that now?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
Move to close the public hearing.
Well, uh, uh, let me just ask one last time, uh, we're about to close the public hearing, are there any more comments from the public seeing none, Mr. Pinkerton?
Move to close the public hearing, uh, in the matter of, uh, the single residence B zoning district, suppose, come in a second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, thank you, okay, all right, that's fine, thank you very much, great job, great job Spencer, everybody.
Yep.
You know, this is when Ulan was, you know, he was, he was the best, he was the best, he was very good, very good at this, yeah, um.
Actually, Ulan was very good at this.
Inclusionary zoning, um.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thanks, Ellen. Inclusionary zoning, um, so, um, we're in the public hearing at this point for inclusionary zoning, let's take a look at the text, uh, that we have at this point. So the text will be different than the presentation to town meeting, so when we talked about like the graph and all that, that'll be in the presentation, that won't be in the zoning per se, now we're gonna go through this process again, okay.
Is there a paper handout for this?
I don't think so, I don't have one.
Just what you said today, just what came around today.
That's right, but I do have print copies of the language.
Oh, I didn't print that out, yes, that's the language, right, I, I think I thought Arlington's was the cleanest.
This is the, this is what came around today, circulated today.
But I'm not sure about that.
Did you want a copy?
Uh, yes, thank you.
Okay.
These are, uh, for the, the buyout for, for sale units, um, these, this is suggested sample language, um.
Right.
Did these, these came from the housing trust?
Yes, they came from Rachel.
Okay, thank you.
So, this is the language from other, um, communities, um. Uh, what, what Belmont says, uh, are we, are we gonna talk about this part of it, are, are we gonna take a look at the other stuff, if we wanna talk about this part, we can talk about this now, do you wanna talk about this part now, okay, um, in, in, in terms, I mean, one of the issues that, so Belmont has and, and the clause in there, we, we've changed it a bit, but the clause basically says that, um, if you have a for-sale, uh, project, and it's just for, for-sale projects as I recall, so you can't do this on a, a, a for-rent project, if you have a for-sale project, the developer has the option, um, and I think the language that we're putting in this is, um, uh, with sort of, uh, the, the guidance of the, uh, of the housing trust, they can come to the planning board and they can basically make a payment of five percent of the value, and we've changed it to make it the value of the, um, the, this, the market value of, uh, the project at, at five percent. The, uh, the language, the language that we're seeing here is a little bit different, um, than that, it doesn't spell out the, it's a payment, it doesn't spell out the percentages on it, um, and they all have this provision that has to do with if the developer thinks, um, they have the option to, um, to buy out, to buy out the, the project or the, the affordable housing's interest in the, in the project, and if they can say that, um, it would be infeasible, basically, they're saying it wouldn't be feasible to develop the projects with, um, with these in place. Now, my question is, um, I'm taking a look at these, these are broader th- than ours because they don't specify for-sale projects, um, so we have to be careful about that, um, am I reading this, uh, correctly, huh? Rachel, you, do you wanna, Rachel, if you want, would you like to, to come up here and introduce yourself, turn on the microphone, you can talk us.
Hi, Rachel Heller, uh, co-chair of the housing trust, um, I'm, I would have to look back and see on the chart that we prepared to see if it's also applied, uh, to rental, I do think we're one of the few communities that has it only for homeownership. Um, but I would say, if, if I can comment, I found. Um, but I would say, if, if I can comment, I found a very, um, helpful report that was prepared on inclusionary zoning by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. It's a recent report. It was prepared specifically for Acton, Bedford, Concord, and Lexington. And there is a section that talks about calculating payment in lieu fees. And although there, we've, we've talked about this before, there's no standard recommendation for how to do it. But this report highlights that there are two, um, general ways of approaching it. One is an affordability gap, which we see in Arlington, where it takes the market rate unit minus the affordable unit, and you can multiply that by the number of units that wouldn't be built, and then that would be given to the trust. Another way is by the production costs. So that's based on the amount that would cost to construct an affordable unit. And that could either be set by the town in consultation with developers, or another way that communities do it is by using, uh, Department of Housing and Community Development's QAP. They set a, a limit on what would be the cost of an affordable unit. So in the current QAP, uh, for two thou- or, uh, yeah, for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, a one-bedroom unit would be valued at three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars under this kind of approach, and two bedrooms at three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, two bedrooms and above. An interesting note...
Construction, that's cost to create, including land?
No, good question. So then, uh, if we look at, uh, Wayland's, hold on, I believe it's Wayland's. They also, let me just look, Wayland or Winchester actually adds in the value of the land, Wayland. So Wayland on page two at the bottom states that, in order to include the value of the land, the financial contribution for each affordable unit shall include an amount equal to the current year's assessed value, divided by the total, total number of units, multiplied by the total number of affordable units. So I think something to keep in mind is, um, a couple of things. One, that we want this used in rare cases, because we have all talked about, there's just not a lot of opportunities for development. And so the ideal is that it is built on-site. Uh, so something that other communities have also said is in exceptional circumstances.
Yeah, that's Arlington's, yeah.
You know, they spell out right in Arlington, this means if it's in the best interest of the town, or the, the, um, units on-site would be, make the project infeasible. So I think those are important provisions that we wanna put in there. But it's also thinking about how this would mo- most often be used. So in a larger development, it's going to be easier to do the affordable units. On the smaller development is where it gets a little bit more challenging. So I go back and forth on this, because obviously, the more money, the better. But in thinking about how much a market rate unit goes for in Belmont, you know, we were talking about this last week, could be a million, more than a million, a small development being built. And the difference between a market rate and affordable could be eight hundred thousand dollars. Now, in this case, are we making it infeasible for it to be on-site and to even do it a payment in lieu? And so I wonder if we might wanna do a hybrid of what Wayland suggests, um, using DHC D's QAP standards and the assessed value of the land. Um, so at least it's clear, it would be, it could be less than eight hundred thousand per unit, but more than three hundred.
Maybe, um, maybe, maybe I'm too much in the, the weeds on this thing, but...
You know, land valuation.
I kinda think that, you know, the more, the more you go in the direction like this, it's like a full employment act for, you know, appraisers, yes. Because you have one for the town, you have one for the developer, they can't to, come to an agreement, so you hire a third. And, um, it's very difficult to, especially with the affordable units, the land value and all that. I, I think, and I understand this, and I think what, wh- what's also in here, inherently, because it doesn't s- separate this out, is that, um, they are also talking about more than just for-sale units. They're talking about for-rent units. So it may be that there's a part in, in Arlington where it's, um, they wanna build there, but they don't particularly wanna build affordable at eighty percent or whatever it is. They wanna do something that's maybe workforce, you know, type thing, which is a different thing. And that's for the benefit of the town, but if they, if they had, y- you know, some of the inclusionary zoning there, it might not make it a feasible project, and so they'd have to determine that, um, it's the best interest of the town, uh, in exceptional, then they make a financial contribution. Now, the problem with that is, if you're doing a project like that, it may be that the project is so tight that the financial contribution may be a relatively minor financial contribution. And I certainly agree, um, that, I don't think, I think we wanna, I don't think we wanna capture the rental part in this, because smaller things don't get affected. Um, so I don't think we wanna capture that, so, um, I don't think we wanna include that. So I think we wanna, eh, we wanna stay with the for-sale. And so I think the question on the, the for-sale, the, the way they did the percentage is cleaner. It's cleaner, so it's a, it's a definition of, is it the percentage? And I think the issue that we were discussing in terms of this was, is it, uh, five percent of the value of the, of the, of the sell price of all the units? Or is it the, the, the value, or the market value of the units less the affordable times five percent? I think that's, we're talking about that. What's your thought on this ad? I think that's cleaner, I think...
Subtracting the affordable?
No, no, I think, I think just the five percent, just, just...
Yeah, that's...
Much cleaner.
I agree.
Yeah. Um, I would, um, maybe we put language in there that, uh, there's some language here that, I mean, that we put language in that, um, I think we have something that, on the recommendation of the Housing Trust and the Planning Board, that we allow that to happen.
That isn't there, yep.
Yeah. Uh, I think that's the way, the, the, um, there's, there's too much complexity in the, the Wayland one, 'cause that would be, 'cause...
Well, Wayland has, I'm sorry to interrupt, it does specify at the bottom for ownership units,
Yes.
the calculation, so it's not including the rental in that. But I, eh, you are making, you know, going back to your conversation from before, you might be making a decision right now without being able to properly vet it.
Yeah.
So I do understand that's a little bit more complex.
I think that, um, I mean, I'm thinking this in terms of going to, to town meeting, 'cause, uh, we wanna get this passed, and we wanna get the changes passed. So, um, I don't know, if there's something we can do, because if we do McLean, we can capture that in the memorandum of understanding. We can, we can do something different.
Negotiate a custom.
Yeah. W- we can do that, uh, from a custom basis. And I don't think the other, I think the other projects are gonna be, like, I think what's gonna happen on South Pleasant Street is gonna be on a rental basis, although we can't be absolutely, uh, sure of that, so. There, Steve, have you got thoughts on this?
I just, I, this is kind of a naive, like, probably a naive thought, but the whole idea of financially infeasible is, according to whom, and, and...
Well, you hire, you hire experts and you, and you argue. So you got three people like me arguing.
Exactly, arguing, and that just seems to me...
Who wants that? Who wants that?
It's a can of worms that just really, do really wanna go there. Because of that, bec- exactly, because of the complexity of making a determination.
Yeah, no, it's, it's hard to do. It's, and, um, people will argue about the land value, and they argue about the entitlements and all of that. So, um...
I mean, I think from reading this is, I don't wanna go way off topic, but in, I had read some other, um, I read, like, Cambridge's Inclusionary Zoning, for example, and because they have so many zoning incentives for providing additional units and stuff, I'm not proposing that now, but I think that would sort of be an, a next layer to this, is to start looking at it, because we've had a few commercial or mixed-use opportunities where no one even considered putting a second story of apartments. And what if we'd given them, let them go up to three stories instead of two, and they could've done some apartments? You know, I, I just, I feel like it...
Better, better the carrot than the...
Yeah, and, and by having incentives, I mean, some jurisdictions reduce parking. I mean, there are all kinds of, it, it's, it can be very complicated, I know that.
This is the Tripolo Road question.
Yeah.
And I thought about that today, actually, when I was walking by the, the seventy-five hundred square foot, single-story building that's being built by CVS there. That's not allowed in zoning.
It still makes me mad.
I actually thought to myself, why didn't he come to us? 'Cause he's got parking in the back there.
Right.
Why didn't he come to us and, and ask us if he could put, like, a story or two of residential on top? And then I realized he doesn't have the zoning to be able...
Right.
Right.
To do that. And that is something that we need to think about.
Such a no-brainer, too, yeah.
Yeah, and he actually had parking. I mean, the trouble along the other ways is you don't have parking.
Sure.
And, um, when we've actually tried to do that for the mixed-use thing, um, the result, eh, and the place that we were gonna do it was the Video Plus, which is now TD, and that was a special, I forget what, what we called that. That was a little zoning district there. Did you remember that, Carl? We had, uh, Sammy, uh, did that. We put an overlay there, uh, briefly, yeah, and, and we were kinda hoping that we would get a mixed-use thing, and actually...
There was a proposal, 'cause I went to a meeting.
There was a proposal for, for Angelo, for Gelates, which is where the Cambridge, um, East Cambridge Bank is. That's right across from the movie theater, that one there. That was a gas station that was a repair place. And that would've fallen under that, too. And he was gonna move the Gelatos store to the first floor, and he was gonna put, uh, residential on top of it. And the same thing happened, the banks, the, you know, two banks, uh, took that. And I forget if, uh, the market, if that was when the, 'cause that's at least ten years ago, if not.
Yeah.
More than that. So I'm not, uh, too sure. So, should we keep the language the way it is on this? Um, let me just, let me read the, the language on this.
Do you have this?
Hold on, I can pull it up.
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
The, the language that we have now is, may, they may appeal to the Planning Board to make a cash payment in lieu of, for, such a cash payment, um, shall be equal to five percent. I would change that language and, uh, say it either, um, shall be equal to at least five percent, because we don't wanna hem us in here. May appeal. So it doesn't mean we have to grant it, right?
Should we just merge sections for six to nine units and ten or more units? Are we treating them the same now?
I think we should, you should just merge them.
Makes you think, like, what, look for the, like, what's the, what did we do differently? They were created, 'cause they had different, the mixed use.
Yeah. Um, I got, I got lost, because we were talking about the second page, um, on D, section two, which is the for-sale thing, so...
I mean, if you aren't specific, I mean, is there an issue legally with not being specific about the amount?
You have to put a bottom on things.
You're saying five percent or, or whatever we feel like that day, you know? I mean, I, that is like, just worry that we...
Yeah. Well, it says...
Five percent's the right amount, but...
For the floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, doesn't... And, and on the other hand, if we could get three, would we turn it away, depending, I mean?
Three doesn't do very much for you.
Sort of, such cash payment shall be no less than five percent? Yeah.
Yeah. Shall be no less than five percent. And making the decision, the Planning Board shall seek the recommendation and shall consider, yeah, I mean, if, if we do that, shall be no less than five percent of the value of the entire development. Yeah, that's fine with me.
And then Chuck, the one I was mentioning just a second ago, so the C one, section at the bottom of page one.
Oh, so C one...
So that one applies to six to nine
Yeah.
for-sale units. Then on the next page?
That's an add-on. Did, when did that get added in here?
It was there, I think it was, it was there, 'cause...
It's a bylaw, it's...
It was, it's in the bylaw now.
Previously, there was a distinction between
Yeah.
the six to nine unit projects and the ten or more. Now, we're treating them the same, so
Okay.
my thought is to put one paragraph, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Or one, one sentence.
Well, the, um, so, it's what, ten percent, right? So at six, so, so the reason it's six to nine, because if you do ten percent, six is, you know, one and a half.
But the buyout, the, the buyout provisions are the same.
Yeah, the buyout's the same. Um, actually, I mean, somebody will make the argument in terms of proportion, proportionality on this, because the, well, maybe not. Five percent is five percent.
Steve.
You know what they say, you know what they say in, in the business? It's, it's a broker's fee, right? The only thing standing between us and a deal is a broker's fee. Yeah. Um, that's a broker's...
I wonder if you can also, if you do add in without spelling out the criteria, to state in exceptional circumstances, so it's clear to developers that the Planning Board does not intend to take a payment in lieu. We prefer units on-site.
Yeah.
You know, so it just makes it a little...
Yeah, I think you're right, because five percent is the broker's fee, and you could just build that into your protocol.
Oh, it just is, there's a, there's a, there's a, there's an incentive that's built, that's built, uh, the developers build in incentive for themselves, or slush fund,
Right.
as they develop these things. And of course, you hope when you go to the market, that you're gonna do much better than that. And, and you do, you know, uh, you do...
Especially in this market.
Yeah, no, this is a surging market, and anything that can be built around here probably will be built. So what's the change the, the, that we wanna make on, on this ad?
So we're consolidating one and two? Yeah, so the applicant for residential
Yeah, okay.
development of six or more for-sale new housing units may choose to provide a...
Okay, that's great, that's great.
I mean, just have to add in somewhere
So you got it six or more, not six to nine?
in exceptional circumstances. So I don't know if you wanna flip the sentence to say, in exceptional circumstances, the Planning Board may allow.
Put that up front of the introductory clause.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
So you wanna try to do that online?
I don't have the, the word dog.
Okay, that's fine, that, that's fine, if, if you know what we say.
That's, you're clear where you wanna go with it?
Well, I think, so, like, do you guys wanna make the edit and then send it to me tomorrow? Is that, or you?
Yeah, I could do it tonight, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because you need it for...
To send, um...
Tomorrow.
Send it out tomorrow, yeah.
We're all gonna be up late.
Yeah, yeah.
It's all good.
But, uh, so is there anything else? Anything else that, who? We wanted to, I mean, I, I think, Rachel and Ed, I, I hope this is gonna be a pretty straightforward presentation. I think it's for you in terms of things. I think when you put the, we were talking about the graph of what the other towns have. So, you know, if our graph that's basically gonna show that as proposed, we're gonna be right there. We're gonna be, uh, with our, our peers in, uh, terms of this, and, um...
Safe to say it's an improvement.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna be a, a shock to the development ecosystem in town. Like, we, we, sure, we could've said ten percent of your value, but I think we're doing it responsibly, and, you know, something you could revisit
Yeah.
in a couple of years. Clearly a groundswell of support, too, generally, and as, as it turned out, other than tonight, it's, you know... Yeah.
Yes.
I agree.
So, okay, so I think we're in pretty good shape. Rachel, have you got any more comments? We're fine?
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the audience? Betsy, Betsy, do you have any, any comments? We're, we're about to close. We're about to close the public hearing. Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate all your help on this.
Close the public hearing on the inclusionary zoning bylaw amendment.
Second, all in favor? Okay, we're closed, we're moving on now. Thank you, everybody. So at this point, did I? So, thank you, everybody. I think that the inclusionary zoning is, it's an important part of the, of the town bylaws. And I think in cooperation with the Housing Trust, I believe that we have improved it. And hopefully, it'll result in more affordable units in town as more development takes place. Okay, so we move on from that to neighborhood determination and working groups. The first one is 50 to 52 Elmer Avenue. So is this a working group thing or do we need to do the neighborhoods, too, I forget?
The neighborhood was confirmed by the board a few meetings back, so we just need to do the working group appointment tonight.
What's the issue?
It's a, it's two dormers on a two-family, and so you've sort of got this wing-like approach. The architect is going back and making revisions based on my comments. And so assuming that they make the changes, then the next step would be for them to come before the working group and then move beyond there.
Let's, let's hold off on the working group until, because we got lots of other things to do. So let's not take up somebody's psychic space in terms of this. So let them come back to you and then we'll determine the working group.
Wait till we receive a revised plan, okay?
See what you think of it, I think that's, yeah, just in terms of the steps in the process, that's what should happen next anyway. And you know what we did on Channing as an example, as well as, well, Channing was the one that, he was starting with a double and you're in, what is the road that we're about to look down?
Clyde, right, and I used that working group to sort of guide them and to, so-
So I think, I think, yeah, if you can get them to pay attention, that should work.
So we have a neighborhood determination for 232 Brighton Street?
That's right. This is a ranch and they're putting a second floor on it. The, there are a few architectural changes that I recommended that they are going to implement. And the size of the addition is in the ballpark of what the board has considered in the past. So I think that they're, they don't necessarily need to do the working group based on their reaction to my, yeah, that's right.
And is the architect somebody that we've worked with before?
No, you, they have another case that's sort of in the same stage, so you will see them again. As far as I know, you've not seen them before, so.
I mean, that looks like a reasonable neighborhood determination to me.
Quite varied, there's been a lot of really terrible buildings built right in that strip there, so.
Brighton Street is really feeling it.
And that, I mean, they've just, it's been right there, so.
There's one by the historic house, by Athena's house that's through somehow, we got to figure that one.
Yeah, that one, that was before our time as it were.
Oh, it was permitted before.
Yeah, exactly.
You drive around town and you see a lot of things.
Yeah, I was just surprised that that one's actually under construction.
Right, it was a nice piece of property, too, it was a shame to see that go up.
Yeah, that's too bad, okay, so we're fine, we're fine in terms of that. So we talked about potential cases, projects, we're just heading towards town meeting. The McLean is on the horizon again as a potential project. I don't think, have there been any significant things in committees since we've talked last?
I suppose.
Chugging along.
Clamoring to come back, we got, I don't know if you were, Spencer and I were copied on, or maybe it's just Jeffrey and I.
I didn't get it.
It's been Jeffrey. I do want to confirm, Bill Lavallo reached out today to confirm that the next meeting date, it's, it's on his schedule as April 2nd, but that's an election day, so I assume that it's just going to be the following Thursday, but I wanted to confirm that that's-
That's fine, that's fine.
You know, we're going to meet next Tuesday, is the idea?
I think we have to meet next Tuesday, yeah. So we'll meet next Tuesday is the 27th, right?
Twenty-sixth or 27th, twenty-sixth.
Six, yeah.
So our agenda will- Agenda will really be these.
These two items, yeah. We'll, we'll get these all set and ready to go to town meeting. And we will go over the, when's town meeting, when's town meeting?
The end of April and then-
Okay, no, that's fine, so we have plenty of time to go over the presentation.
I have a meeting on the 26th, but I can, it's the Belmont Victor Garden Board. But I could come, if we have the SRB language for vote for, oh, well, I'd need to be here to vote on both of them, right? Okay, I'll, I'll work it out.
Okay.
Be fast.
Yeah, hopefully it'll be quick, it'll-
Does anybody else have any other comments before I ask if we want to adjourn?
I just, the Belmont High School Traffic Working Group or whatever, there's so many letters in there, I can't remember. They are planning a public hearing, it was going to be, wait, we're Tuesday, tomorrow night, but they just canceled because they're not quite organized, so it'll be sometime in April.
Okay.
So I think, I think it's particularly for the neighbors to get out and hear some of the things they're looking at to mitigate.
I would have thought your participation in that is over because in terms of that for the planning board, we're pretty much done on that, right?
That's fine with me, I've just been showing up.
Talk with them, who's going to, just, you know, reach out and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you've done your job there.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? That being said, do I hear a motion to adjourn? We're gone, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Turn off your microphones, everybody.